I'd like to call the board this meeting of the Board of Commissioners. We do have a forum here and have all the commissioners here, so we appreciate you attending tonight. Pledge, if you will join me in pledging allegiance to the Constitution.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the vision of liberty and justice for all.
If you will make stand as we pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity for us to gather here tonight to discuss the business of Cleveland County. God, we ask for you to be with each of the residents of our county, watch over them, guide, direct them, help us make wise decisions here since I'm not here tonight, and help us lead this meeting tonight as neighbors. We ask to thank you in your name. Next, would I like to recognize any elected officials? Do we have any elected officials here with us tonight? Just go for it. If you're up, stand up and identify yourself. We appreciate you attending tonight.
Good evening, Richard Hooker, Cleveland County School.
Thank you, Richard. Anyone else? Also, any veterans that are here, if you'll please stand, I'd sort of recognize you. Department heads, we've got a new department head tonight, too. But any department heads, if you're here, if you'll please stand and let us know who you are and where you're from.
Allison in the resources.
Brian Hethley.
Chris Green, Tax Minister.
Bill Porter-Clan.
Thank you for coming in. Commissioners, the first item on the agenda is the motion to adopt proposed agenda, and before we do that, I would like to mention item number six. The request has asked for that to be removed, unless it's a long-term amendment under public hearings.
I make the motion to accept it, pending that with the acceptance of the statement that was just on.
Got the first and second. Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Next on the agenda, we have citizens' recognition. Persons who wish to appear before the commission during this portion of the meeting should register their name and the subject they wish to address to the county clerk prior to the beginning of each meeting. Each presentation will be limited to three minutes. Before time is needed, please register your questions to be placed on the agenda of the next regular meeting with the county clerk. And we have two people listed tonight. First on the list is Mr. Buford Burton. If you have a card, just give your address.
My address is 322 Morris Road, Southern Kingsmont. Chairman and Commissioners, we've been here multiple times in the process of looking at and considering the benefits of many downsides to propose casino and ask for withdrawal of support letter. I believe you'd be compelled to do that if you're looking at the senior candidates. Some of you have expressed dislike at being questioned about your decision to support casino or the way you were questioned or questions that you thought were out of your faith. Imagine how we feel as a group of citizens that put you here. We're being ignored, perhaps much worse than the question to judge and not answer. If you made a good decision, tell us why you made it, other than being persuaded almost immediately by a hollered padding estimate from jobs. If you believe our lore will say, "Goodie to your decisions," tell us why you believe it, and maybe you have some information to offer to. You still have the option to ignore us and announce the downside elements that we hold, or you can begin listening and participating in group conversation by putting the subject for support of a casino officially on the agenda. Your individual offers to sit and talk with some of us for one may seem like an holly branch on the surface, in reality, it isn't. You know we're rich and we're unlikely to change, and apparently you're on the opposite side of the view. One of the reasons that that's not a good idea is because we're not speaking just for ourselves, but for a lot of citizens in county, and having those one-on-one discussions would mean that we're not allowing those people to be privy to the information that's passed back and forth. You put this issue into public by signing the letter of support. It really doesn't matter if you sign it one time, you're still signing the one letter and looks like an official decision of approval. In truth, it is. I remind you once again that the support letter you signed was both inappropriate and unethical. You may not have legal liability for it simply because there is no specific law against it, but you still think and acknowledge the fact that you didn't have any idea how many citizens would put their confidence in supporting casino. Even if you had known the percentage, you're right about what it indicated fully by support by all of us. I want to remind you that you can legally withdraw your individual support just by writing another letter stating that you no longer support proposed casino. You don't need to take others, and you don't need a single other opinion for it. Just as our day is unknown and unknown, so are your days to correct the bad decision.
Mr. Adam Porcage? Take your address, please.
Adam Porcage, 1005, certainly moves best specific, 7.1 miles from ground zero. Prove valid justification for a casino that I hear from most of you is jobs, so I thought I might come to council to see facts about jobs that you might not be aware of. Start things off, I ask, what is the number of jobs in France? The media propaganda started at 1,000 jobs and has now dropped to 2,500. Since larger gambling facilities import over 1,500 employees, I can only assume that developers included construction jobs in this estimate. Let's dissect those for a moment. Are you aware that the Katava tribe has already entered an agreement with a general contractor owned by the Lumbia Indian tribe to build this casino should it be approved? This means that not only will none of the construction jobs provide any local benefit, but there is no chance of a local GC such as Bean to bid for and win this contract. Moving on to the actual jobs associated with the operation of the casino thrown into our X road block of the town. The top chief Harris White has made several statements in the media that this casino will solve the Katava tribe's unemployment woes. I don't think anyone should really be surprised at this. The reservation is only a 25-minute drive from the casino location. This will eliminate the majority of the entry-level service jobs, since some have been banking and going to the local property. Lastly, we look at the mid and upper-level management and supervisory jobs that could actually benefit the community. Historically, we find in our research that an overwhelming majority of cases, these jobs go to people imported from elsewhere. This only makes sense if you look at it dispassionately. It's not like Cleveland County is bringing in people trained and experienced in running the gambling floor. To summarize our dissection of the jobs propaganda, we find that the Cleveland County area will likely gain a couple of hundred full-time entry-level service jobs, and perhaps another couple of hundred part-time non-benefited jobs in other areas. As we expected, some questions arise upon completion of such an examination. Does this relatively minor job impact justify the overwhelmingly negative fallout associated with it? How many jobs does it take to make it worthwhile to destroy one globally owned family-run business and the jobs associated with it? How many jobs does it take to make it okay to transfer four and a half million dollars each year from our economy to what now the state owner's bank account? And although there are certainly many other questions we could ask, I think I'll finish with perhaps the most important one of all. How many jobs does it take to justify an increased number of women and children in this area being emotionally, physically abused, financially stressed, deprived, or perhaps even abandoned through the creation of hundreds of illegal matters?
Thank you. Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and for that, I'll turn it over to our county manager. Would you like to introduce him?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening for several things that are with me this evening for your consideration. I have several budget amendments. Budget amendment number 64, I vote first, and it is a budget amendment from our Department of Social Services, and this is for the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, and this would be to allow our county government to receive a federal fund, block grant money in the amount of $32,943 to continue to support this program for citizens in our county. The next budget amendment, budget amendment number 65. That budget amendment is from our Health Department, and it is in our Animal Control Program, and there are several revenue streams, lots of money that we bring forward, total in the amount of $37,402. This money is coming from a variety of animal control grants, as well as municipal revenue collected from its policies in the county for animal control services, and this money will be used for ventilation, sound system, and for the purchase of a new vehicle that will be used in our Animal Control Program. And that's budget number 65, and that's also for your consideration this evening. Finally, the third item for your consideration is item C, and it's the number seven Volunteers' Part of Department Budgets, which is also for you this evening for your consideration. And that concludes the consent agenda, and we have an answer to your questions that you may have.
Commissioners, are there any questions about the consent agenda? Motion approved. And second. Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Next, we have to move on to Special Rate Conditions, and for that, I'd like to turn it over to Coach Holcomb.
At this time, I'd like to ask Elton, if you would present the resolution from the boards, or do I have that? Okay. I have it. Ask her to let her read it, and then we would have it. She presented that verbally, and we'd like to recognize the gentleman, young gentleman on the floor behalf of the board.
Okay, this is a certificate of recognition from the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners presented to Robert Gabriel Gade, the vote third. For your commitment to excellence, not only on the basketball court, but also in the classroom, we're volunteering your time and being a role model for you throughout the county. For your many athletic accomplishments, we commend you, and they'll present this to you the third day of June 2014.
If Gade can come up to the front. Ross probably left a beasting commissioner's job in county manager, please.
I can take probably 10 or 15 minutes to highlight the accomplishments and the awards of this young man, but I won't do that. I know his parents have got to be mighty proud, justifiably. Mr. Hooker, I know you're proud to have represented you, represented the school system that's accomplished what this young man has. You look at him and you see what high school scholastic athletes should embody, and that's a gentleman, a leader, a scholar, a guy who lives a good life. And what he has accomplished in athletics is parallel in academics. You can't say that about a whole lot of student athletes in this world today. To be if never the National Honor Society, I want to say the best statistic that he has, in my opinion, to the last. This young guy led state in scoring. He's been picked top 20 athlete in basketball by Parade Magazine, selects the Parade All-American Team each year, or the top 20 in the nation, also by another nationally recognized, well, I started saying accredited agency, but it's not really an accredited agency, but a national recognized agency that picks outstanding athletes in all different types of sports, and selected in the top 50 of that. It's been said about, well, he's got a good line about him, good bloodline, probably some truth to that. If you're a cousin of David Thompson, a lot can be said about you. If you also are family affiliated with Howard Gentry, there's a lot can be said for you on that, too. But the last time I can remember, a Shelby, a Cleveland County basketball player, being awarded Basketball Player of the Year in the state of North Carolina was taken Thompson. I could be wrong on that, but I say that to say it doesn't come along very often, where a county and a city has a gentleman that is recognized as the outstanding Player of the Year. So, all that being said, he carries with him a 4.4 academic average. And as a student body president, all four years he's been in, I think that speaks volumes about the kind of leader that he is. And I guess we'll be seeing him on TV as a tiger, because he's been awarded a scholarship to Clemson University, so we'll be honored to be able to see him play on TV and wish him the best of luck in a very, very tough league, but we know he's a driven individual that accepts nothing but the best, and that's a compliment to his parents and also to the school system for what they have embodied in him. So, Gade, congratulations. We'll be pulling for you when you go to the ACC. We know you'll do great academically, and we'll be pulling for you athletically also. It's our pleasure to present you with this certificate, and of all the others that you have, we hope that this will have a place of recognition that you will look at and say, "Well, the county is really proud of me, boy, I've accomplished both we are." Congratulations.
All right. Any other commissioner, I'd like to see any comments or other.
I think he needs a 15-minute. Oh. Very one.
How very proud he is of you.
Anyone that play basketball?
No.
Gabe, I'd like to tell you, I mean, on behalf of the commissioners, we're really proud of what you've done towards athletes. I want to tell you, as a parent of a 60-year-old in high school now and a 12-year-old, they both know who you are, and they go to Cheese Mountain, but they still know who you are, and they are, they look up to you as a role model. And I want to tell you how much I appreciate you as a dad, being that role model for my kids to look up to, and you're a local, you're from here, and they've got somebody to look at and say, you know, "He's done, he's done a great job." You are that role model for a lot of kids in our community. So, that now, what you're going to do with Paul is awesome, what you've already done in your life so far, I can't say thank you enough.
Now, as Commissioner Holcomb says, you've got the floor for about 15 minutes. You like to say anything?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank you a lot for being here, and also thank you for what you've done so far.
So far, he's not done with you.
He's not finished, because there will still be funds need to be set. But there's a lot more I'd like to say about this guy, you know, because having grown up in athletics myself and having been part of that, part of my life for years, he's done so well, it's hard to pick out particular things, because the list goes on and on and on and on and on, what he's accomplished, and it's a little bit of a struggle to try to pinpoint four or five things, and what I've tried to say doesn't do you justice. But we're so proud of you as a county, and we'll be pulling for you, and proud of those parents, too, who've been a little bit during the years. Richard, thank you for being here representing the school. Okay. Thanks. We would let, we would let the county commit, uh, manager say a few words, but he bleeds blue. So, no, just kidding.
Sorry, my camera's died, or turn on the side. All right, let's take one more.
Commissioners, next, we have a other thing from the Cleveland County Youth Commission. And for that, we have Mason, chair tonight. Mason, if you'd like to hear. Do you want to come give us some information?
I have a question. Mason, question, I was the president this year of the Cleveland County Youth Commission, and I would like to thank you very much for the opportunity to serve on that condition. It was very enlightening for me, and I think we did a lot to benefit the community. Two of the things that we did, we held two camp food drives this year, one right before Thanksgiving, and one this past month. They were both very successful. We had total of over 100 camps that we donated to a couple soup kitchens, one in Cheese Mountain and two that we donated to soup kitchens in Shelby. Our most recent project, we had a fundraiser at Fats, which was, I'll tell you, it was a great lesson for us as a commission, as youth, to sort of head that project, see it through the end, and also be able to prepare the kitchen. Also, we have Mrs. Ackert here with us, our adult, I guess, representative, and as far as saying that she was great instrumental in the duration of the commission, and if she wanted to say if you worked about it, if you want, you know.
I want to say one thing.
Would you like to come up here?
Okay.
Commissioner Ackert, she was very instrumental, and she was, she led the charge on creating this youth commission.
She's our county manager of all my friends. I just want you to know that we started the youth commission with the idea that if we grow our youth, then our county will continue to grow. That's the whole key here, because as we get older, and we all will, they are the new leaders that will proceed up, I mean, will come after us. And this group, let me just tell you a little bit about this group. I didn't even have to be present, and Mason, he looked back and he said, "I didn't even have, I didn't even have to be present." This was an independent group. The first group, we guided through. This group, they took it and they went with it. I don't know, I guess that's, the leadership is a none issue for you, young man. You got it. And the spirit of the commission, the youth commission continues, and we've got a new group that's getting ready to come forward. We will be doing a little bit of changes, because this time, we really want to get, make sure that they understand your role in the county, and we want to make sure that it's a teaching situation. So, we're really appreciative of what you have done as commissioners to let the youth, to allow the youth to have this opportunity, and we thank you so much, and I thank Mason and, new president? The new president, so I'm going to let you stand and let her, let them know who's going to be up here next.
I'm Anna Carpenter, and I'm also the new president, and I'm currently the chairman of the Youth Initiative. Thank you. Mason, just like you said.
She said she's going to be the next president, and as the next president, I would like her to come up and help me with something. We worked very closely with the Boys and Girls Club this past year. We started a partnership that I hope will continue to grow and become very helpful for both parties. So, like I said, we have Fats fundraiser, which we raised $543, and we would like to present that to the Boys and Girls Club specifically to help with the new youth teen center that I know they've been working very hard.
I'm going to accept this on behalf of Boys and Girls Club. There's a lot to be said about what you guys did, have done this year. I think I've seen a lot of growth that you've had. We appreciate the partnership that you've shared in the club, because it's good to see being mentored by your peers and to learn, and you're working with a lot of kids that don't have some of the things that you may have. And the teens, the purpose of the teen center is to give our teens a place to go, a place to be, where they can learn, they can mentorship. You guys are always welcome there. I know that you had some meetings there. If you continue to do that, we want you to continue to partner. Thank you very much for this. It's going to be a very good college.
Gentlemen, Congress, we want to get a picture and use it if you want to come up here with us, and we'll stand in front of the ceiling. All right, Commissioners, document number six, we took off the agenda, so we're now at item number seven, which is the 2014-2015 Cleveland County Budget, and I'd like to introduce our county manager, which may be briefly discussed before we open the budget.
Just heard, Mr. Chair. If you were called two weeks ago, county staff did make a formal presentation to chair of work commissioners into the community. We have announced the budget with no tax rate increase, no service reduction, and two weeks ago, our presentation attempted to connect the budgetary resources that we're recommending for your consideration primarily back to the board's focus areas and your strategic goals that you've been working on over the past year, 18-month period. I will not go back through that tonight, and at this time, we'd be happy to turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair, but the staff is here to answer any questions that you may have, provide any clarification or any assistance in any way.
Thank you. The budget was presented a couple weeks ago, and it's been put out there for everyone to look at, but with that, I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing on the But with that, I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing on the budget. And anyone wishing to speak for or against the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget, please come forth, state your name and address. And comments should be directed to the board. If you have any questions, please direct those to the chair. And we live at the time of five minutes on this. You might like to speak for or against the county budget?
My name is Robert Williams, Austin, two fourteen, East State Cook Trail. I looked through the budget that was put out on the internet, on the agenda, and also the manager's letter. And what I found was probably more questions than I had answers for the budget. A lot of, a lot of questions that, that what I didn't see. I found no entry in the budget regarding the hospital sale. Yeah, we saw this number Vietnam, we're a member of Vietnam, so I didn't see anything in the budget about that. I knew, I knew we were gonna build a health department and a health department. But all that was supposed to pay a pair of, we were gonna receive three million dollars a year for like thirty-some years. I didn't see anything in the budget about that. At least it wasn't spelled out that way. And I'm just wondering about that, there's, there was no refunds to the citizens and all the rest. I'm a taxpayer, I didn't have a rebate. Do we have all the books, revenues during the year? And why no, why no reduction in the citizens property taxes? The, uh, the letter that, uh, the manager's letter to the commissioners basically said we've got, we have a lot of tax revenue increases due to businesses. We deferred taxes and now that deferred period is over, we're starting to pay more property taxes into the county. I saw the appropriations, any extra revenue, we appropriate that money dollar for dollar. But we're gonna, we're gonna learn off today than wherever we spend and we're down again. Economic development, tourism appropriation with four point five million. We're gonna break down on what, who gets what, what part of, go to economic development, what part is the tourism part of that? Why aren't they combating like that? How, how do we measure the money? We're spending four eight million or four or bigger items besides food, social services, four or bigger items that we're spending money for. And, and I see no measurement of improvement or measurement of the benefit that we're getting. We're getting business, but we've lost a lot of business over the years too. So, I just didn't, I just didn't buy any, any, any measure of facts there. Uh, there was no entry for motel taxes, uh, oxygen taxes. Maybe I didn't, maybe I didn't see it, but, but I didn't see any entry for that. Where does this money go? I mean, we've got, we've got the money coming in. I know there are oxygen taxes to be paid, but I saw nothing in there where, where that money was going. How much money we're getting, how much is going up, just didn't see it. We showed a hundred fifty thousand revenue from investments, county investments. What investments is that? There's no mention of that, no description. Ninety-two thousand four hundred dollars for historic artifacts, something else that, that needs some like foundation something along the line. Hundred fifty-four thousand for public firing range. My understanding was when we started out that, hey, we're, we're building a range would be nice. And I agree with all of that, I like the cheap guy, I see. But it, it was brought out first, hey, this is not gonna cost the county anything. But apparently it's gonna cost the county a lot, starting off a hundred fifty-four thousand dollars. Hopefully we get our benefit. My understanding is now that we're, we're gonna build a million dollar gun range with taxpayer funding. I hope this work will earn me about a million dollars. Over five million dollars for debt service. What debts do we have that we're paying five million dollars in debt service? It looks to me like if we're getting a hundred fifty thousand dollars for investment, that we're paying five million dollars in debt service, that maybe we could take some of these investments. There they are. Apparently they're not generating a lot of revenue. Maybe we could funnel that into debt. Might only halfway through money.
Please drop up.
No entry for payments to DCC for the old courthouse. What are we gonna, what are we gonna do with the courthouse? They're open now, I hope we pay for themselves. No, no mention of our evaluation for property taxes, bringing more revenue. We purposely, I was in the meeting back here, we purposely did not reevaluate last year because evaluation would be longer. We would house the rates and taxes.
Commissioners, I appreciate your comments and your concerns. Please wrap it up because we're well over our.
See nobody else in here. I'll see it.
We're well over our five minute, one minute.
Well, I even have five minutes in for something so important.
Well, thanks, I appreciate, appreciate your comment. Anyone else wish to speak for or against the county budget? Anyone else wish to speak for or against? Then I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, now open the discussion. Chair and I moved the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget there through the heads and the hand and the title. Got a motion approved? Any other discussion? Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
You have a second? Any other discussion?
I would, I, I think that a lot of questions was asked, but an answer's there if the individual's sound, you know, with, uh, with the county manager because just in some of the speaking that he talked about and for debt services, things that we've got. We've got, it's in there, the answer's in there. And I think definitely less than I'm with you. And globally, so once you join, whether that.
I agree. And I don't think now's the perfect time to have a laundry list of questions. The time is before this during our, during our, uh, and, and anyone who wishes to can, can make the phone call with county manager. I'd be happy to kind of sit with you. Any other discussion? Got a first and a second? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any votes? Alright Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is, um, turn it over to Chris Martin. Art Field.
Field.
Turn it over to Field. For landing park minimum housing code violation.
We have two cases for your review tonight. First is twenty-five forty-four Southern Hill Church Road. Property owner William D. Dykes. And we began working on this back in December and have gone through the legal process and talked with Mr. Dykes about the property. And it is before you tonight for consideration to demolish the structure. I think you can see it's beyond repair.
That was caught.
According to our building specs, it's standing beyond fifty percent of the aggregate structure. And I'll be glad to answer your questions, Scott.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I have an application.
Yes.
Land apartment, big connection is, and not giving back.
Yes, Scott, we have a tax, I have two hundred twelve dollars and we just made the repairs at, uh, um.
Has there been any attempt to do anything to it since your location is? Was this a result of a?
Mine?
Commissioners, can I have a question? I don't think any motion. Got a motion to the board of ordinance? Is there a second? Got a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand.
I mean, you vote for certain, I didn't get.
Sir, this is something that goes before the plant, talk first, and then council before us. He'll give you notice and you can talk, and you can talk with, um, with, um, Bill Carter on it. If you'll, if you'll wait, Bill will talk to you right after the end.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, we have another.
Another property on the same street across the road, twenty-three nineteen, plus a Hill Church Road, property owner Charlie and Billy Lowery. And reported about same town. We actually could not contact the property owner here, we had to run legal labs, both for the hearing and for the order. The property owner's tax address is Peter Moss and Earl, but you have a, a recent.
Commissioners, are there any questions for Bill?
Yes, I, I got one. You said property owner, is that the property, the trailer and the property?
Same.
And the joint?
Same all.
Same all or bid?
The land, the rent.
What about the fire? Oh, the fire, same works. That's going back to the other one.
Oh, yes, the previous tenant, yes, correct.
You have, you have a notice on this one, you still haven't got much.
No, we can run legal labs and that's, that's your alternative, so you can't notify the property owner by mail, they won't follow my mail. And you can't serve them with notice and your alternative is to advertise in the newspaper that serves that particular location where they list their address. Or lists for taxes and for referral, show sorry, and you probably cover that here. Big labs and.
Oh, any taxes on the property?
I believe I have that. Tax value zero.
How was the process, how was the end process?
De-overs, twenty thirteen.
I see that. It's what you could probably love again also.
Any other questions? No, I don't have a motion.
Comment the message to the doctor.
Got a motion to the doctor's ordinance? Is there a second?
Next.
Got a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Commissioners, last item on the agenda is Commissioners' reports. With that, um, Mr. Holbrook, you might restart on this one.
I don't know. Our school activities go on, graduations, artists, conservatives, separating graduations and. I'd like to thank Commissioner Johnny for the work that you're doing. The astonia and the tolerance that you're, that you're demonstrating in dealing with the highways and the prioritizing of those highways. Most of us don't have any idea of the time that you're staying, is what I'm taking. We should say thank you for the responsibility of looking at us so well and those board meetings. And I'll pass on to Commissioner.
Well, we did have an M Q B, most of that, that, uh, planning organization that were working on several projects, was still continuing with the, uh, the mine passing Shelby, they're looking at several intersections in and around Cleveland County and widening of, uh, into interstate from Belmont like this, the way it looked up, any of them going to Charlotte in the morning, get help, coming back. So, that, that's been a big issue. We also had last Thursday, I thought this one up to Hollywood Ness with the, uh, officials up there, we got a good meeting. And hopefully one that was responding on the back. And, uh, one of the, I guess, one of the nicest things, Jason and I tend to know where to go to graduate. Everybody's been to North Shelby. Those kids are gonna work for years to give any place you do what they can, make a difference in their lives if we were told that. The talents that they've got, they're both gonna set the, uh, out of the school system is what we need to do. The school itself, which is the need to be like, so. But other than that, uh, had, had a pretty good weekend, it's like there's several things, got several meetings coming up in the near future.
Johnny, thank you and you guys for attending the North Shelby graduation since, um, I was out there today and there's, there's a lot of things going on out there and just it overwhelms you, the excitement, the support of the kids and what all they do. I'm involved with therapeutic counseling out there on Tuesdays and Thursdays during the school year. So, if anyone has an interest in coming out and watching, twenty-nine and twelve, it's going amazing. It's just, it's been a busy couple of weeks. I want to commend our counterparts here for everybody trying to split up and run and attend the board meetings and events and, uh, the, all the things that, uh, that we're asked as commissioners, because we all do it because we want to and we enjoy it. It is exciting to see the school system wrapping up their, their year this year and the successes they've had. David's one of them, we've got quite a few right, right along there with him. So, you see these kids out there communicating what they're doing and how hard that they work getting there.
Just speaking of North Shelby, Ken, I think there's a fundraiser going on, you know, parents and company to that cause. Those kids really enjoy what they do. A lot of people think not capable of doing much, but they now do things and they, they do a lot. And then pretty soon they'll become a fundraiser, so the kids can travel.
The, the scudback?
Yeah.
The scudback?
They, uh, really, really have a great time. In fact, the last time we went, it rained all over. But they actually enjoyed staying in, kind of, jail and, oh, and, um, really enjoyed the time. One difference, I know the kids enjoy it, but you'd not be, you'd be, you would not be surprised. Those people who brought good time, they're still there down to the places that Jordan's making out of work. And it, I guess, my prayers are out there that it, and I just, I know this, this is their responsibility and I hope that one day in the future that the school board will, uh, recognize that program, uh, and with the new building. And I know that's their responsibility, that's their decision, but it's kind of outdated up there and it's time that, uh, we let's get it settled for those, uh, challenges. And, but, uh, I'm still looking. But, uh, I'm still looking for that time when it used to be where we could actually slow down a little bit, that, that full-time mission, or part-time mission. I see it coming, as long as we're staying active, if the county continues to grow, uh, I think that has gonna be more of use rather than less.
Anything else, Chair, that, Mr. Chair?
I, I'd like to say it's been, uh, last couple weeks, it's been a very humbling time, and, uh, and had a good time of reflection. North Shelby School, uh, Memorial Day services, uh, that were had across the county, uh, were very, uh, very moving and, uh, I think, uh, very appropriate. Uh, State of the Community Breakfast, we had that, uh, a week ago or so. Uh, it went very well, our, uh, especially Kings Mountain this time. Uh, we have, uh, next State of the Community Breakfast is July sixteenth, I believe, in Shelby. Uh, and the location will be announced soon on that. Uh, but I'd like to, to, since he's back in the room, I'd like to thank our, our county manager for really doing a good job as far as putting the budget, uh, message together and connecting, um, the budget back to the county goals. Uh, not the goals that the, that the commissioners have set, but also the goals of our department heads. And I want to congratulate our, our department heads for working so hard to, uh, to bring something that we, I think we can be very proud of. And you have, you have, any other question, sir?
No, sir, just thank you very much for that recognition, and I appreciate you recognizing more than anything the fine department heads and the fine departments that we've got in Cleveland County government. Highly responsible, people that work very hard every day, and it's been my sincere pleasure to work with these folks, and to be able to continue to do so, and the next year will be just a very, very exciting time for us. Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, with that, there's no other moves. Want to add a motion, Senator?
Make a motion.
I got a first, second, third. All those in favor, please raise your hand.